Women and behold, we care to join us on a recitation of the Lord's Prayer followed by a moment of silence.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive our own trespasses against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thy is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
It is now seven o'clock. Shall we sit? Councilors, call order. Please remain standing and join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is it, please? Roll call, please, Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Robs, here. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Gates, here. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mr. McGlockman, here.
I now entertain a motion to dispense with a reading of the Journal from January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. So move.
Second.
A motion on Mr. Roberts and a second on Mr. Martin to dispense with a reading of the Journal from January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yay.
Mr. Martin?
Yay.
Mr. McGlockman?
Yay.
Mr. Rob?
Yay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay.
That motion passes. Now it comes to the time for public comment. If anyone has a public comment to make before council this evening, please go to the podium, state your name and address, and make your comments to council, or if you want to speak to a piece of legislation later on in the agenda, you can reserve time for that in the same manner. We do have the Shelby Historic Preservation Representative here tonight for the annual report, but maybe before that, is there anyone who wants to make public comment to city council?
My name is Cliff Bruner, and I live at eighty-nine Grand Boulevard Extension. My reason for being here is about a year ago, I started getting social security. And because of when my birthday fell, I got my social security on the third Wednesday of the month. So when I get my utility bill, it is due on the fifteenth of the month. If the first of the month falls on a Wednesday, the third Wednesday is the fifteenth. This year, it will only do that three times. I can never get my social security check before the fifteenth. So my thing with the utility bills is, what I guess what I'm asking is that we either try and change when the utility bill is due, or have it due on the fifteenth with a period of time like a week, so that I don't have to pay that late fee every month. Now, if the first would fall on a Thursday, that means the twenty-first would be the latest that I would get my check on the twenty-first. So what I guess what I'm really trying to say is, if we can extend the late fee another week, so that we're not paying that late fee all the time. Have I explained it well enough that you understand what I'm saying?
See, Mr. Ensmann is taking notes, so does anyone have any comments? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, Mr. Bruner had called me probably two weeks ago now, and, you know, what he's laid out is absolutely right. He's caught in a bind. It used to be that everybody's social security came on the second, I think it was, of the month. Well, that's not the case anymore. Uncle has chosen to, you know, to rotate that. Well, our due dates don't rotate, and so, you know, he finds himself, and I'm sure he's not the only one in town, exactly in that same line, and, you know, looking to see what kind of flexibility the city might, might have. I know we don't have any flexibility in our ordinance right now. We'd need to change things. But I had discussed this briefly with the utilities director, and he had said he was going to reach out to other communities and see what they might do. But I think this is a, you know, very legitimate concern that the gentleman has, and, you know, an excellent opportunity for the city to be flexible where, you know, Uncle is not flexible in this particular case.
Certainly worth consideration. Thank you. Anyone else? Historic Preservation Commission?
I believe you all received your report.
Just your name and address, pardon me, is that?
Randy Sampson, two oh four East Main Street in Sheldon. I'm sure you all received the annual report and studied it thoroughly. Though I'm just going to give you a brief of what that report says, try to give you a background of where we're headed with the project. You've all noticed that since they've done the work downtown, which has made things much nicer. There's been a lot of activity downtown, a lot of painting, a lot of sprucing up of buildings. And to go with that, the commission had not been faced with that much activity before. So what arose was that we don't have enough guidelines to make it easy to show owners of properties what they need to be doing, how they need to be doing it, and just to give them a comfort level of where we're headed with things. The Historic Commission is trying to maintain the unique characteristics of the buildings downtown, which in turn is going to create more jobs, more revenue, and, but we don't want to be that person that they are viewing us as as being just a way, in their way, of doing something to their building. So what we've done is we've, we need guidelines for the city. Cities like Worcester, cities like Ashland, have gone through all the steps of putting guidelines together for historic preservation. Makes it much easier for us to go ahead and say, okay, here's the guidelines, here's how we want you to conduct this, and how can we help you? So we applied, well, last March, I believe, you, the council approved twenty thousand dollars in preparations to get the guidelines completed. We applied for the grant, and we received a grant, but it came in at just a little over eleven thousand dollars, which gave us a nine thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand dollar shortfall. We were able to negotiate the cost of the guidelines down to roughly seventeen thousand dollars. So now we have a shortfall of six thousand. So we're presently trying to figure out how we're going to, if we're just going to give up the grant or if there's another way that we can finish that off. But that is, everything that we are doing right now is, you know, education. So we've created a new COA, it's a certificate of appropriateness. It's what the owner of a building submits to do work on the building, and it gets approved or not approved. The old COA was not very friendly. So we recreated and we designed a new look for the COA and references so those people that are looking to do things for their city can look up guidelines for, not the city's guidelines, but guidelines that are state guidelines. So we also brought in what is called Building Doctor. I don't know if anyone is aware of that. That's the state program that basically loans you people to come in and answer questions, look over the city. We had five, six buildings that were actually visited by the Building Doctor, and they lend their help then to correct items that need restoring of the buildings. So everything's been based on education. I think the more people know about it, the more people are going to be willing to, to not object to what we're asking them to do. We're going to continue with that this year, and we're going to try to put programs together for meetings with the actual building owners of those people that are in the historic district, so we can keep them abreast of what's going on. The meetings will maybe be once a quarter. That way, I think we can get better results, we can get more cooperation. We are also putting together financials of what towns have been able to do through the restorations, in that being that, you know, what's the average number of employment opportunities arrives out of that effort? You know, what is the annual income on properties in town that arrives out of that effort? You know, to try to get them to understand that this is not just a place in operation, that this is for the town, more activity. So I'll open it up for any questions you guys may have. We did have seven COAs this year, so those with us, you've seen them. The DFW is one. Watters was one, they painted. The CIC's building, the Shaw building, that was one. So there is activity. There's a lot of things going on that people weren't aware that there is an organization like ours that tries to guide them. So our focus has got to be on education.
Mr. Gates?
Mayor, when you look at the totality of economic development in a community, historic preservation plays an important part.
Well, thank you for your report and update, and thank you for your work on the finishing. Any other public comment? Now, we move forward to reports from standing, especially committees, Community and Economic Development Committee, Councilman McGlockman.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community and Economic Development Committee, we met today at three thirty briefly. So there's four items I'd like to pass on to council. The first, in reference to the CHIP, the Community Housing Improvement Program, the housing study from county is complete, and so within the next month, Jitika Shetty and Jessica will be presenting the results to city council. Second, the Black Fork Commons construction is in progress, with an estimate of completion date starting June. Third, the Lloyd Rebar Expansion is set to begin ASAP. Some of the final signatures on the enterprise zone agreements were being collected tonight. And finally, Richland County Transit, the countywide survey on transportation issues is in progress at this time. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McGlockman. Any comments or questions from Mr. McGlockman regarding his report? Then we'll move forward then to Public Works and General Operations Committee, Councilman Roth.
Public Works and General Operations Committee met on the twenty-fourth, discussed several items. First item of discussion was the Mansfield Avenue property. Mr. Geis advised us that that had officially transferred at that time, and the owner is moving forward with his plans to develop that. Mr. Dean was present at the meeting and gave a short report on his work. He has a list of eleven properties that are currently vacant in the city, and he's continuing to look into that. He feels it needs to be addressed, and several avenues that he would like to approach would be agreements between the land bank and property owners or between some organization that may be interested in rehabbing those, since housing in Richland County is, is a topic these days. So that would be a, a better way to go with that would be to rehab these so, so that they would be available for people to move into. Mr. Geis advised that FEMA has increased our rating to a Class Seven, and he can fill you in a little bit more about what that means. Basically, that's a little bigger discount for those required to get flood insurance, and that's all due to our flood plain management program, so that's all to Mr. Geis for managing that. He also advised that parks are currently working, as you can see, on the Black Fork Commons project, and also coming together with some plans and maybe moving forward on the pickleball courts that have been discussed here previously. And, and finally, we discussed the sidewalk replacement program, and I think you see a resolution on tonight's agenda to get that up and going once more. And that's all I have.
Mr. Rob? Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Rob in regard to his report? If not, we move forward then to the Safety Committee, Councilman Roberts.
Thanks, sir. All right, Safety Committee met on February first. County EMA met, and both the fire department and health department were represented. The new director was in attendance. County EMA will have a Skywarn Spotter training on March ninth at six P M. at Pioneer School. Pre-registration is required. This way, two people ought to learn how to read the sky before and during storms. I have, if anybody's interested, a flyer from that with information that you need to sign up for that presentation. So it sounds like something pretty interesting, so if anybody wants it, I've got this. We can make copies if needed. So the fire was awarded five thousand six hundred ninety dollars from a BWCE grant to purchase boots and gloves, and a ladder truck that has been gone far too long, and I don't know if it's back yet or not. I have to talk to Chief Thompson, but it should be back very soon. We're all cross the fingers it gets back way sooner than it has been back too long. Health news, a few licenses were sent out, and they need to be returned to the health department sometime in March. Health Department has no new nuisances to report. It's not, it's kind of typical of this time of year, but, and this is more on the bug work side, Bob Dean has some nuisance that he's dealing with right now. So we got to talk about his side in Safety Committee, but we certainly do in Public Works. So, and let's see, tonight, we will be, for this twenty-five, we will be learning on, yeah, learning on, learning on the, except the mosquito. So, let's see, more health news, COVID cases were down to twenty-four from fifty-three in December. Many cases were on, zero diarrhea, hepatitis on the rise in the county and in town. Measles is declining. Franklin County had a really big outbreak, and that is starting to decline. RSV is also on the decline, and Ebola, which was, you know, was present, is, is gone, with having Ebola cases in the state. So with that and everything.
Mr. Roberts, are there any comments or questions for Mr. Roberts in regard to his report? All right, hearing none. Before we go to reports, a city official has asked for a five-minute recess. I tell you, the gentleman would move for a five-minute recess.
So the second.
A motion on Mr. Gates and a second on Mr. Martin for a five-minute recess. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlockman?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Motion passed. We go to five-minute recess at seven. Voice exercises. Councilor goes back into session here at seven twenty-four, all right? And we are now under the reports of city officials, the mayor, and this first meeting in February offers the opportunity or the obligation to present a formal report to council, so you have that before you, and I'd like to read into the record. Today, I'm pleased to communicate to you and the citizens of Shelby that the presence of state of the city is strong, secure, and fiscally sound. This annual report to council forces me the opportunity to enumerate and celebrate with you the many noteworthy accomplishments of last year, as well as preview some goals for the year ahead. As usual, I would like to begin my report with a notation of sincere appreciation to all the people who choose to invest their valued time and varied talents in the ongoing collective effort of providing a full range of municipal services, day in and day out. I would like to recognize and publicly thank the venerable members of this city council, namely Charles Robb, Darren Roberts, Garland Gates, Nathan Martin, and Stephen McGlockman. With your legislative assistance, we were able to efficiently process and pass thirty-one ordinances and sixty-eight resolutions this past year. Once again, it's been my pleasure to work with Project Coordinator Joe Geis, Director of Finance Brian Crunk, Deputy Director of Finance Amber Cutler, Director of Law Gordon Easter, Director of Utilities John Ensmann, Stacy Gunn, and City Hall staff members, Dr. Chala and Beth Conrad of our Health Department, and Economic Development Manager Jessica Graven. I also want to gratefully acknowledge Police Chief Lance Combs and Fire Chief Mike Thompson for providing stellar leadership in their respective departments under some very difficult circumstances. Two thousand twenty-two was another impressive year, particularly March through December. As a result of teamwork within our city and collaborative efforts within Richland County, we shared the announcements of plans for projects and expansions, held a memorable groundbreaking ceremony, and celebrated ribbon cutting ceremonies across the city. Over these next several minutes, I would like to present a concise summary of two thousand twenty-two and a brief preview of two thousand twenty-three. In March, a delegation of city officials and select members of the Community Improvement Corporation of Shelby met with the Richland County Commissioners to present a request for help with the funding of the Black Fork Commons Neighborhood Investment Project. That same month, a majority of Richland County Commissioners approved five hundred thousand dollars' worth of American Rescue Plan Act funding for the Black Fork Commons project. Subsequently, Shelby City Council authorized me to enter into a sub-grant agreement with the Commissioners to facilitate the transfer of funds. On behalf of the city, we want to thank the Commissioners for their very significant support of this extraordinary project. Although there was not a great deal of fanfare, we were very gratified to announce that the Main Street-led service line replacement project was completed in March. In this, the other March projects, the Shelby Community Improvement Corporation facilitated the sale and installation of decorative icons up and down Main Street. These icons represent the past, present, and future of Shelby. They are an integral part of the strategic placemaking initiative envisioned by the CIC. In early summer, we joined with a good number of family and friends for our ribbon cutting at Sarah's Pooch Parlor at the corner of Mobican and East Whitney Avenue. In July, a longtime goal of this administration and council became a reality, the hiring of Robert Dean as the city's first part-time code enforcement officer. Mr. Dean is the perfect fit for this position, and his efforts have reduced the workload of our zoning inspector and health department. August was the month when we held a construction handoff meeting with Omni Fiber. Omni Fiber's provision of a pure fiber network across the city is a result of many years of plans, trips, discussions, and decisions. One thanks city council in general, and Councilman Martin, Mr. John Ensmann in particular, for their vision and drive, which has positioned us as a community that offers a fiber-to-the-home network unknown by most Ohio communities our size. Ms. Jessica Graven, our Economic Development Manager, was awarded with a distinct honor in September, being designated as the Ohio Economic Development Association two thousand twenty-two Rookie of the Year. on behalf of the citizens and the business community of Shelby. On a Sunday September afternoon, an impressive number of Shelby CIC representatives, county and state officials, and dignitaries from across the region joined us for a very special groundbreaking ceremony for our one-point-six-million-dollar Phase II Black Fort Plaza project. At present, the contractors are working through the winter elements with anticipated completion in late June of two thousand twenty-three. Another Main Street niche market business celebrated their opening with a ribbon cutting in September of two thousand twenty-two. The Dove Candle Bar was eager to display their family-oriented business of offering personalized candle creations, a place where individuals can design and fashion their very own scented candles. Continuing the theme of Main Street development, Crossroads Church purchased the former Mason's Lodge building at Main and Mohican. Extensive renovations are being completed, and they expect to open the doors to their new Shelby Ministry Center soon. In October, we had a sweet time at the Marigold Bakery on West Main Street. This ribbon cutting included collectible samples of homemade baked goods. In October, the Shelby Fire Department took over the transporting of all patients within our fire industry. This came about as a result of an unanticipated non-renewal of the contract with a private ambulance service. Our firefighters stepped up admirably to fill the void. We swore in three new firefighters in late December, and they began to serve in early January. We now have fifteen full-time firefighters and Chief Thompson serving our citizens. Our expanded two thousand twenty-two paving project was fully completed in October. We invested some seven-hundred-eighty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-forty-seven dollars in asphalt applications on strategically selected streets and a few alleyways. Likewise, a panamanian opened its doors to Shelby Elementary School students in the month of October. This faith-based program has seen steady growth since their inspired inception. In early November, I was happy to participate with Shelby City school officials in the dedication service of the beautiful and functional pre-K through eighth-grade facility. Also in November, we were thrilled to host an opening Main Street ribbon cutting in celebration of the completion of Phase One of our downtown revitalization project. We want to thank all of our citizens and downtown businesses for their patience during the months of street state construction. Councilman Martin spearheaded a project to renovate a downtown building and establish the Ralph Phillips VFW Post 291 in the heart of the city. There was a celebratory ribbon cutting event aptly held on Veterans Day. The Edward Jones Building, which is perfectly situated right across from the Black Fort Commons entrance, has undergone a spectacular exterior transformation. It certainly stands as one of the crown jewels of our downtown district. Our park system was wonderfully enhanced by the addition of a par-three disc golf course in the Seltzer Park area, and things look promising for the construction of pickleball courts in two thousand twenty-three. In December, Beer's Autoody Services Repair received a prestigious countywide award as the Richmond Area Chamber's Small Business of the Year for fourteen and fewer employees. We extend our congratulations to Tim Beer and his team. Also in December, we learned of a substantial expansion of Shelby Homegrown Business, Lloyd Rebar. This multi-million dollar expansion will initially bring with it ten new full-time jobs as they double their footprint on technology hardware. So, as you can see, we had a blessed year in two thousand twenty-two. Looking to the future, we're moving into two thousand twenty-three with financial momentum and a spirit of optimism. The Main Street Shelby Health and Wellness Center will be engaging in a one-point-two-million-dollar renovation of the facility this spring. This impressive investment will enable them to expand medical and mental health services to even more patients in the years ahead. Their staff is excited for the future, and so are we. Stay tuned for more details. Mr. Geis continues to be in communication with Mickey Mark representatives, who are planning to break ground this spring for the construction of a gas station with a built-in Dunkin' Donuts. The site of this new business will be the former Scarlet's Buick location on Mansfield Avenue. As mentioned, Lloyd Rebar is planning to break ground in March as they move forward with their massive expansion project of adding seventy-eight-thousand-five-hundred square feet of production space to their present facility. The owners of Black Fort Brewing plan to start building this spring and bring Mama's Pizza under their roof to provide a unique setting for friends and families to gather on Mansfield Avenue. They hope to open their doors this fall. The administration and Ms. Riven are working with a growing Shelby manufacturing business that is also looking to put in lotion a sizable expansion plan. Work is underway to ensure utilities and site preparations are complete to move forward this year. Of course, we anticipate a big splash as we unveil the Black Fort Commons project. Also, if things go according to plan, we will see a brand-new symbol of welcome, the Shelby Arch spanning Main Street this year. I'm hoping that we, as a city, can continue the revitalization of momentum by supporting the plans to replace Main Street trash receptacles and the placement of sidewalk benches up and down Main Street. We have some beautiful natural attractions in the north side of our city with both Reservoir Three and the walking trails of Shelby Black Fork Wetlands. The one-one-quarter-mile walking path around the reservoir is in dire need of resurfacing. I'm working with Mr. Geis, Mr. Ensmann, and Mr. Crunk to come up with a proposal for a pavement consideration this year. Unfortunately, we have experienced some delays in the installation of security cameras throughout our park system. I've been working with all parties to see that those state-of-the-art cameras are in place this year. In this day and age, they are absolutely a necessity. This year will be marking our fortieth year as a nationally-recognized Tree City USA. The Shade Tree Commission is working on several ideas to mark this significant occasion in a way that is worthy of such an achievement. We enjoy the distinction of being the only city in North Central Ohio that is both a Tree City and a Bee City. The illustrious Yogi Berra once said, "The future ain't what it used to be." Indeed, the future of Shelby now looks decidedly different than it did ten years ago. We have the opportunity to help shape many dynamics of the future with the right decisions made in the present. May we be granted the wisdom to make decisions in two thousand twenty-three that will keep us on the pathway of unity, progress, and prosperity. Let us carry on with the confidence expressed in our state motto, "With God, all things are possible." Thank you. May God bless you, my fellow public servants, and may God continue to bless our beloved city of Shelby. And report to council. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, thank you for your annual report. I'm going to be received and placed on file.
Second?
You have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts that this annual report be received and placed on file. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
That motion passes. I don't know. We will move on to Mr. Crunk, Director of Projects.
Thank you, sir. That is a tough act to follow. It is more or less normal business in my office. Taxes is very much upon us, and so we've gotten quite busier up front. Also, in the back offices, we have already provided documentation to our contractor for the gap conversion, so that way we have those financial statements for the auditors. And we've been in contact with the auditors as well to get that project going along much sooner this year. They are happy to oblige. My biggest project right now is appropriations. Those are coming along nicely. I recall last year, I think we might have... Well, we met twice. I think one of them, we might have used the day that we did the Finance Personnel Utilities Committee meeting, because a lot of our council members were available already. I'd have to do that again, and then follow up either the next day or early the following week, if you wanted to do that, whatever council members decide. But I will be ready. My deepest appreciation to everybody who has already been feeding me a lot of numbers. So, yeah, pretty much is my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Crunk. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Crunk regarding this report? Moving forward then to Mr. Easter, Law Director. Remember, I have no report this evening. Mr. Easter? Mr. Gates, project coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Broadway sewer replacement project started last week. It's a little over halfway done now. It's a little stuff going through the backyard, but they're getting through that. Our Black Fort Commons project continues. Had some issues with the permit for the splash pad and so forth. That's due to the State Department Health, so we're working through that. We should have our paving program here at the next council meeting for consideration. And as Mr. Robb talked about, our CRS rating, which is Community Rating Service, that is other things that we do over and above just our flood plan regulations. So, we are now a Class Seven, which gives our citizens a fifteen percent reduction on their flood insurance. So, we were a Class Eight at ten percent, so now we are seven fifteen percent. So, that's just a few other extra things that the city council and our administration have done over and above the regulations. So, I've been in the program for quite a few years now. So, and that's all I have.
And Mr. Gates? Any comments or questions for Mr. Geis? Not going to move to new business? Is there any new business that you brought before council this evening? There are none? Move forward to unfinished business? Future use of an H.B. fire station again? I hope is by the... Sometime next month, and we'll be taking that matter up. And then unfinished business? All right. We'll go to the next session.
Substitute ordinance number one, two thousand twenty-three. Amending sections two hundred fifty-eight point zero one, salaries of members of council, two hundred fifty-eight point zero two, salary of the mayor, two hundred fifty-eight point zero three, salary of the director of law, and two hundred fifty-eight point zero four, salary of the director of finance and public record. Chapter two hundred fifty-eight, elective official salaries of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
Move for third reading.
Second? You have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the third reading of substitute ordinance number one, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Substitute ordinance number one, two thousand twenty-three passes this third reading.
Will the ordinance be taken and passed?
Second?
You have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of order on substitute ordinance number one, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion?[1391.82] Vote call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Substitute Ordinance Number One, two thousand twenty-three passes.
Ordinance Number Three, two thousand twenty-three. Enacting section two hundred four point zero-six, Mayor James E. Hinckel Conference Room of Chapter two hundred and four, Official Standards of the Codified Ordances of the City of Shelby.
Move for second reading. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the second reading of Order Number Three, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? Vote call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Order Number Three, two thousand twenty-three passes this second reading.
Ordinance Number Four, two thousand twenty-three. Enacting section two hundred thirty point zero-eight, flooding fees of Chapter two hundred and three, Mayor of the Codified Ordances of the City of Shelby.
Move for second reading. Second.
Is that you, Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the second reading of Order Number Four, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? Vote call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Order Number Four, two thousand twenty-three passes the second reading.
Ordinance Number Five, two thousand twenty-three. Authorizing the Consumer Price Index, CPI, to be adjusted upward above the allowable percentage per the language in the rate adjustment provision of Chapter one thousand forty-four, Sewer Charges, Section one thousand forty-four point zero-two, Conditions of Service Rate Schedule of the Codified Ordances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move the first read? Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the first reading of Order Number Five, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? Mr. Martin.
We discussed this a little bit last month, but per the ordinance that we passed previously, anything above the five percent is required to go to before council. So that's why this legislation is before us, both pieces of legislation here, Order Six Five and the accompanying Number Six, to allow for a further point-seven percent additional upward adjustment.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I was gratified to read in the attachment to the ordinance that the CPI has food and energy index taken out so as to minimize this to only a point-seven percent increase. My appreciation to those who noted that.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? Vote call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Order Number Five, two thousand three passes this first read.
Orders Number Six, two thousand twenty-three. Authorizing the Consumer Price Index, CPI, to be adjusted upward above the allowable percentage per the language in Rule forty-three of Chapter one thousand forty, Water, Section one thousand forty point zero-four, Rules, Regulations, and Fixed Charges for the Municipal Water System of the Codified Ordances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Will the ordinance, yeah, this first read?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the first reading of Order Number Six, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? Vote call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Order Number Six, two thousand twenty-three passes this first read.
Resolution Number Four, two thousand twenty-three. Authorizing the mayor as Director of Public Service to advertise her bids and to enter into a contract for the removal, replacement, and/or repair of sidewalks and establishing program criteria for the same.
Resolution be taken up and passed? Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of Resolution Four, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the program that was in, back way back, like, two thousand and nine, before we started doing the other route of mandating. There's been a lot of, just I've had a lot of phone calls of people wanting to help on their sidewalks. So this was why this was, I took it to the Public Works Committee, and they thought that was maybe a good idea to bring it back this way to get some voluntary efforts into replacing their sidewalks and using our funds that we have and then setting up the criteria. Previous, the ratios for who the city of owner were done by section eight limits. So I looked up the updated numbers, and that's what's in this chart, so. And everything gets pretty much the same from a long time ago.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, this was, as I read through this legislation, it was certainly a trip down memory lane. I'm glad to see it coming back.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Yeah, a couple of things that were a little concerning. I think that if we're going to put city funds to something as large of the scope, that it'd be nice to have a, similar to what we do with streets, a priority of sidewalks. Which areas do we actually feel we need sidewalks in that are in good working order? And put a majority of our resources into those. The other is that this is not allowed for new sidewalks, just replacement sidewalks. And there certainly are a lot of areas in our town that are required by ordinance to have sidewalks, but they don't. And so I, why are we excluding those homeowners? Those are kind of the two questions that I have.
Mr. Gates.
The only thing I can say for the new sidewalks, when this was installed, you know, way back, that wasn't part of it. Now, I wasn't the author or whatever. I just bringing this back, so. Obviously, council didn't decide what they want to do, but this really was a successful program for people who wanted to get the sidewalk fixed and just didn't have the money. So there's a lot of them out there. So this was a way of getting that done. Now, I would say that's a valid point about the, you know, let's look, see where the worst ones are, but this is, the way this was set up was first come, first served, so. It really did, the people who really wanted to, they were there showing up at the door the first day we said, "You can't have cases."
Mr. Martin? There's the following question then, so I see that we have a certificate here, so the maximum, is it my understanding correct, and the maximum that we're putting towards this, we'll call it current iteration of the program, seventeen thousand, and then we can come back later and readjust?
Mr. Gates?
Yeah, so we'll have no idea how much money that the residents would bring in, so. I guess I did see this was entered into the contract. I think what we did before was, we actually got, we received applications, we would see what was above, you know, how far we could go in the city funds, and then we could bring it back to council to increase that for the city funds. And probably at that point, we'll have more funding in our city income tax that's being collected between now and when when we go out with it.
Mr. Martin?
That's one last comment, and then I'll say my piece. I'm I'm gonna vote for this, but my hope is that we look at a more comprehensive program, especially considering the vast amount of areas that are not compliant with having sidewalks. Whether they're grandfathered or not, that's a question of whether that's actually the case. Then we also have the case of technology parkway and a lot of runners and trucks coexisting in the early hours. So we have the, I guess, our, the way our city is changing, I think, requires a little further examination and a more comprehensive long-term solution to our sidewalk problem. I think this is a, this is a fine and adequate first step. My hope is that the administration and council work together on a more longer, long-term, comprehensive solution.
Any other comments, Mr. Crum?
Well, one quick comment on the cert. Mr. Gates and I spoke about that at length. Currently, the fund has a little over seventeen thousand in it. By the end of the year, if we spend nothing, I'm estimating probably about thirty-three thousand. So we do have, if council would like to increase this either in one of the later readings or later on in the year, they can do that. We also, you know, if they don't, we have other monies for some of the funds or projects that we've been using this fund for, so. We have some options there, so if we'd like something changed in the next couple of days.
Mr. Gates? Mayor, two points. First of all, it's, with all due respect, it's the duty of the Finance Director to advise council what's available in that fund. It's not up to us to amend it. He tells us what it is, and if, you know, again, finds out in a few months, you know, my estimation is by the end of 2023, we're going to have this thirty thousand dollar figure. All he needs to do is to, you know, inform us of that, and then the administration can act accordingly. In a perfect world, every property within the city limits would have curb, gutter, street, sidewalk, sewer, have the whole thing. That's a perfect world. I don't ever expect to see that, particularly in the balance of this year. But the city charter clearly empowers city council to tell people through the legislative process, "You will install sidewalks of your property." So if that, you know, seems to be perhaps the vision of the member to my right, if he wants to do that, then he should bring in legislation doing that, where we will assess people for the cost of their sidewalks. Now, we just lived through an assessment project on West Main Street for sanitary sewer. And, you know, I will tell you from, you know, my years of experience, there's nothing that brings more people into this chamber with angers than when they get a certified letter from the clerk of council telling them, "Guess what? You will install this. If you don't, the city will, and it's gonna cost this." But nonetheless, council is empowered by the people of this community through the city charter to do just that. So if that's what, if that's what the ultimate goal is of council, is that people have sidewalks, we have the power to do that.
I mean, just sitting there for thirty seconds, it runs my mind that a lot of the sidewalk replacements were caused of safety issues. I understand Mr. Martin's saying about the safety issue in our parkway, but these were tripping points, uprooted trees were tipping sidewalks all over the place. They couldn't ride bicycles onto there or skateboard or whatever. And I think that was the reason why it was for the removal and replacement. I think it was a safety issue of walking on uneven sidewalks, not digging on grass, so I think that's part of it. I'm really glad.
Well, you know, it doesn't have to be an even order. We can still, if council passes this, do this for people who ask to cause share, but then council can still go through and find these trip hazards and, again, inform people, "You shall do this."
Any further discussion? Vote call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Resolution Number Four, two thousand twenty-three passes.
Resolution Number Five, two thousand twenty-three. Authorizing the mayor as Director of Public Safety of the City of Shelby to apply for the two thousand twenty-three mosquito control grant and declaring an emergency.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Gates for the passage of Resolution Number Five, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? Vote call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Resolution Number Five, two thousand twenty-three passes.
Resolution Number Six, two thousand twenty-two. Recognizing the Service Department employees for their outstanding public service during the December two thousand three, December twenty-third through twenty-fifth, severe winter weather storm event.
Will the resolution be taken up and passed? Second? We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of Resolution Number Six, two thousand twenty-three. Discussion? Mr. Martin.
Mayor, I request the clerk read the resolution in the record.
Resolution Number Six, two thousand twenty-three. Sponsor, Councilmember Martin. Recognizing the Service Department employees for their outstanding public service during the December twenty-third through twenty-fifth, severe winter weather storm event. Whereas, a severe winter storm with blowing and drifting snow and wind chills reaching forty degrees below zero tasked the Shelby Service Department employees with maintaining the streets and alleys and nine water main breaks during a three-day period spanning from December twenty-three through twenty-five. And whereas, the Service Department employees did not waver from their public service duties during the extremely dangerous winter weather event. And whereas, several Service Department employees answered the call on Christmas Eve to report to a water main break on Shelby Avenue that had taken twelve hours to repair. And whereas, employees had to endure hours of continuous work outside in the sub-zero temperatures to repair water main breaks and clearing snow from the city streets for the residents of Shelby. And whereas, it is in the interest of public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the citizens of the City of Shelby that the mayor, as Director of Public Service, be authorized to present to the Shelby Service Department with this resolution recognizing their outstanding public service during the December twenty-third through twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, severe winter weather event. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Shelby, Ohio, a majority elected thereto concurring. Section one, that the mayor, as Director of Public Service and Shelby City Council members, do hereby recognize and sincerely thank the employees of the Shelby Service Department for their steadfast and tireless service to the Shelby community during the December twenty-third through twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, severe winter weather event. Section two, that the mayor, as Director of Public Service and Shelby City Council members, do hereby recognize the following Service Department employees for their public service. Superintendent Ron Shepard, through Chief Foreman Andy Dietz, Division of Streets employees Billy Bale, Eric Moe, Kelly Kaiser, Heath Schroeder, and Tyler Distel; Division of Water Distribution employees Sean Cantleberry, Scott Chatsir, Brian James, and Lane Benchoff; Division of Sewers Maintenance Chris Corbus, Steve Schneider, and Christian Ballingley. Section three, that all meetings and hearings concerning the adoption of this resolution have been in compliance with codified ordinances two hundred twenty point zero-one, Ohio Revised Code, Section one hundred twenty-one point two-two, and the Charter of the City of Shelby, Ohio. Section four, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval by the mayor, and the earliest period allowed by law.
Mr. Martin?
I think it's very important, and I've said this for some time, that when our employees go above and beyond, that we recognize them not just with, inside a committee or inside city council, but with actual, you know, as meaningful words as we put together. I say this often, but I really do believe that we are the crown jewel of rural Ohio, and I am, I count myself fortunate and blessed to live inside city limits of Shelby. We have an outstanding team of public service employees who provide absolutely exceptional services. And they do that on the daily. But there are certain times when they go far above and beyond and with very little gratitude prove their worth way above and beyond that. And this is one such, not only was it the weather, but also the circumstances of a holiday as well, you know. And so we are extremely grateful. This resolution is, you know, a small token of our appreciation. And I hope that we are able to give copies of this in the hands of all those employees of Shelby.
Well said. Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I echo what Mr. Martin said. My wife and I hunkered down for those three days. I think we opened the front door, maybe the back door, but once during that time, so. You know, for the people, these employees of ours who got perhaps the worst winter weather that I can remember, particularly for an eccentric time, we should truly be grateful. Mayor, I ask, you may have consented, I'll be listed as a cosponsor of this resolution.
Mr. Gates has asked to be listed as a cosponsor? Are there any objections to that change, or do you all want to be called as cosponsors?
Could add my name to that also?
So we're saying, no objections, Mr. Roberts, Mr. McLaughlin? We'll amend that then to include all council members. Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Vote call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Resolution Number Six, two thousand twenty-three passes. It comes to miscellaneous business, and miscellaneous business that we brought before council this evening. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, move Council adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for adjournment. Vote call, please.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Council adjourns at eight oh four. Thank you, gentlemen.